Which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wilson, will you do a roll call of the members, please?
District one, Darrell Jeter.
Here.
District two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District five, Danny Castile.
Here.
District six, Chris Manus. And at large, Stephanie Anick.
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have the form.
Thank you. Next, we will have the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Wilson?
I do not have any. If anybody else has any, Mr. Skeen.
Madam Chairman, I do have one to add.
Okay.
The Church Department of Compostote additional officer request.
Okay. New business?
Where you gonna put that?
We'll do a new business, I guess. That's okay with everybody.
You want to put that as?
We'll do an E.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the change adding the new business item in the E?
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. Okay, motion carried. All right. Do we have approval of August 6, 2025 minutes? Can I have a motion to approve those minutes as written?
So moved.
Okay, Stephanie moved that. Can I have a second, please?
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Okay, item six on the agenda is citizen expression, and I'm going to read something to you all. Rules for citizen expression period. Citizen expression period is a point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you are from, in the county, and/or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say in account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizen expression. And I do believe we do have one person who has signed up for citizen expression, and that would be Claudia Jessie. Will you please come up to the podium? I forgot that.
Hi. You have to forgive me, I'm a little nervous as well, so.
Aye, join me.
My name is Claudia Jessie. I actually live in Russell County, but the organization that I'm here to represent is Meals of Love, and it is in Nicholsville. Meals of Love was started eighteen years ago in Nicholsville. It is a community volunteer group that cooks meals and takes to people in the community that are in need. In 2019, Meals of Love was shut down because of COVID, and the place that we were working in Nicholsville no longer wanted us to come back there. So in 2020, Free Hill Baptist Church, which is on Little Duck, decided to restart Meals of Love there. And that is where I go to church, and I had already been working with Meals of Love for a couple of years before it shut down. We work out of our church, but it is not necessarily church-sponsored. The church just allows us to work there. We serve anyone in the community, mostly older people. I read something one time that said the biggest problem with growing older is being overlooked and forgotten. What we do with Meals of Love, first of all, we take a meal every week. But the main thing that we do is we show people that they've not been forgotten. They've not, they're not being overlooked. We take meals to anyone who asks us, or if, you know, a family member asks us or a community member asks. They don't have to have any affiliation with the church, it has nothing to do with that. It is a totally volunteer organization. And it relies totally on donations for the food and the things that we do. Many times, we have gone to visit someone and they were having a medical problem or they were having some other problem, and we were able to meet that need. We have one couple who were not able to go to the grocery store, their vehicle was down. And one of our members from Meals of Love take them to the grocery store once a month now. There are a lot of things that we do other than just taking a meal. Although the meal is the main thing. But it has been a great blessing to me to be a part of this, and I think it has been a great blessing to our community as well. We have one lady who told us, she said, "I look so forward to these meals because it's the only time through the week that I get a complete meal." She said, "I cook, you know, vegetables for myself," whatever she said, "but this is the only time I get meat, vegetables, bread, and a dessert." And we try to send generous meals, a lot of people make two meals out of them. So that's what I have. Do you all have any questions about our Meals of Love?
Do you want to have a question?
I'm familiar with your operation, and we'll be discussing it, I guess, at the end of the session.
Okay.
The number of people that you service.
Our base number right now is twenty-eight. We have served up to sixty. It fluctuates according to the need. Sometimes we will take meals to people on a temporary basis if they're going through an illness or an injury, or we serve a lot of people who are going through cancer treatments. So the number fluctuates, but right now, we're serving about twenty-eight or twenty-nine people every week.
Were you asking for a donation?
Yes. Like I said, we rely totally on donations. And with food costs going up, it's getting harder. And so we, yes, we are asking for a donation.
Do you serve twenty-eight people to twenty-six people every day, or?
No, it's once a week.
Once a week?
Yes, once a week.
But that's a lot of food.
I'm sorry.
That's a lot of food.
It is a lot of food.
Thank you.
And thank you for what you do.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Peggy Tyson, I'm from Snowflake Road. And I'm here on behalf of all dirt roads in Scott County. They're hard on buses and vehicles. And I want to thank VDOT for all the maintenance that they do on Snowflake Road. And they don't have, we realize that it's not just Snowflake Road. It's the 252 or 253 miles of dirt road in Scott County. And the maintenance that they do is temporary. And that is why I'm going to ask, and really, I'm probably begging Mr. Kilgore or Mr. Pilliam to fund more money for dirt roads, because you can't do anything without funding. And then I want to ask the question about Riverside property. Is that a benefit to Scott County taxpayers? And Snowflake Road is on the six-year plan, and I hope they will be funding when it comes up for paving. I've charted down, I'm getting off of my notes. And I want to thank my sister and the bus driver is here also from Snowflake Road. And again, I want to thank VDOT for all that they do for, to try to maintain all the dirt roads in Scott County. Thank you all for y'all's help, and y'all have a blessed rest of the day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, supervisors.
Good morning.
I'm Darrell Darty. I live on the other end of Snowflake, 611. And it's three miles of dirt road. It worked pretty bad, the rock block slid out. And they got it took care of, but they maintained it after it ever rained, seemed like they washed it out, but we need help on that road. And I really thank you, Eddie, and your supervisors, and VDOT for clearing the rideaway. Awesome. It's good. It's fantastic. I'm surprised you've done a great job on that. And also, I asked y'all for a bus trip last time I was here to go on a detour, on a tour, not a detour, a tour of the roads. Go through Snowflake, to Kilgore Hollow, into Nicholsville, Hope Cross Dean Hollow, to show you some of the roads that we travel on. I'm not the only one that's got a bad road. There's a lot of people that got bad roads. It's got kind of good bad roads. And I believe if we fixed our roads, kids will be able to live here better. They stay, come in with more population. Because you buy a $50,000 car, you're not going over a dirt road. And I just want to really thank you for cleaning up the rideaway. And maybe Mr. Ferguson will live in the bar of bus and take y'all for a ride. Your kids drive that bus, and I carry the cargo that them kids is, and your precious cargo there is in the world, it's your kids. There's no other cargo valuable than your kids, your loved ones, grandkids. But I just wanted to use my expression about it, and I thank you, and I appreciate you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen expression?
Jerry Baker from Boosie Creek. Michelle, you're doing, you're gonna do a good job. Don't worry about it. Just pour on the coal. But I just wanted to thank Peggy. She brings it up every time, about all these dirt roads. And I want to thank Eddie for getting Buller Chapel Road graded for us because we've got a big declaration coming up next Sunday, and if it don't rain, we'll be okay. But I talked, called Mr. Wright that lives on that road, and we was hoping we get the tiles cleaned out and the ditch lines straightened out. And he said they didn't, they didn't clean them out. I didn't have time to go up there and look at it, but I want to thank VDOT for doing the job they're doing. And also, I'd like to ask a question here. Can the people that lives on them roads, can they take their trucks and grader blade and dip them side ditches out and clean out the culverts themselves, bins that, you know, that's on their property without any liability? And anyway, just to circle back there, we just, I, you know, we really appreciate you all, and Michelle, and all of you. And y'all do a good job, and I want to thank each and every one of you. And I was thinking, I forgot something, but I can't think of it. So Michelle, you're doing a good job.
Mr. Bricker.
Thank you.
I asked you a couple of questions. I see we got Mr. Sumter here, VDOT. You asked us our question. We all kind of looked at each other, and we didn't have the answer. So I asked the man in charge, Mr. Sumter, about cleaning.
Well, I'm sure he'll, I'm hoping he'll answer that when he gets up here.
Okay.
And I won't take up no more of your time, and thank you for the question there, Dan.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Oh, I know what it was.
I knew you'd think.
Everybody, everybody called the people running for governor and see if we can get this reversed back the way it was before 2009 to help VDOT get the money, the equipment, and everything to do the, where they'll have the stuff to keep our roads good shape. Anyway, all you'd have to do is, if enough people just on them two running for governor, they do something. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
Just want to take a moment and remind everyone that September the 13th, Saturday, is our household hazardous waste collection day. We hold that annually to try to get people an opportunity to get rid of stuff that they may not feel safe about or we don't want in our trash truck. So that will be Saturday the 13th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. A change this year, we usually do it down at the Gay City Municipal Parking Lot. Due to their park construction and going on, we're moving it to the parking lot outside of the Community Service Building here. So it will be in the parking lot out here. People will be able to come in. We just want to, people, to take advantage of that. You know, the old container that might be in Granny's basement that you don't know what's in it. You know, if in doubt, bring it out. And we'll take care of it and try to keep it out of our water and streams in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to close the citizen expression, and now we can take any action that we need to take. I think the first one was meant from Claudia Jessie from the Meals of Love in Nicholsville. She was asking for a donation.
I'm very familiar with their operation, and as, I think last time we made a similar type contribution to the organization. I'd like to make a motion that we, the $1,000 to the Meals of Love in Nicholsville.
All second.
Any, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Do you need any information from her?
Yeah, I had to make the check out too, and the address.
Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
Do you have the contact information for account?
This is, this is the church's mailing address.
Madam Chairman, there are a lot of things. Or did you have something that you want?
The road trip. Okay, we have Mr. Darty's suggestion for us to go on a road trip. I'm down for this. If it's okay with Mr. Ferguson. If we could do it on my off day, that would be great. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay. What about you, Darrell?
I do not, I don't know.
Okay. When and what, okay. What about you? It's a field trip. It's been a long time. All right. We'll get you a statement of time. We're Mr. Darty, guys. Oh, blessing. Okay. Well, we'll get back with him. All righty. Anything else?
I'll speak to Ms. Tyson's comments. I think, Mr. Wilson, you did invite our representatives. Have you got any update on that?
No update.
I'd like to remind the public that Mr. Wilson has requested that Delegate Kilgore and Senator Pilliam have been asked to attend this meeting to discuss about a very important topic we hear at every meeting, and that is our roads in Scott County. Thus far, I don't think he's gotten a response yet. Is that correct? And two years ago, I actually tried to make appointments with both of them and was unable to do so. So it's, I'm not surprised by this. But these are our representatives, so hopefully, they will come forward and do something for us. Riverside property, I did attend the EDA meeting. Those projects' construction have been delayed until at least '26. They requested funding from the Virginia Department of Housing. It first round was rejected, and they're reapplying for set round two for funding. I think, do you have anything else to add to that?
No.
Okay. Mr. Darty, I mentioned VDOT clearing the tunneling of that. I had one other bus driver that called me from the Nicholsville area, had a similar situation on Bucker Road. VDOT right away got on it and cleared it out. I would like to see any bus driver that feels like they have an unsafe situation to contact me, and I'll work with them and contacting VDOT. They've been very helpful in getting on these safety issues. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to say, to Mr. Sumter. I've mentioned that place down on Clint River, Highway 65, around the Loveberry. They got on that, done a very, very fine job. And I thank you for getting them on it, getting it cleared. Watch you got, of course. Thank you.
All right. Item 7A is a public hearing. This public hearing is concerning the intention of the Board of Supervisors of Scott County, Virginia to propose for passage a resolution authorizing the insurance of an estimated maximum amount of $6 million principal amount of general obligation school bond of the county. The proposed use for which more than 10% of the bond proceeds proceeds are expected to be used are the financing of the construction and renovation of one or more schools located within the county, including Weber City Elementary and Yuma Elementary School, all of which constitute capital projects for public school purposes. The bonds will be sold to the Virginia Public School Authority. Before we open this public hearing, we have with us today Mr. Austin Sachs from Davenport and Company with a presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the Board. Do you have hard copies of the presentation, if you prefer that? Come over and pass these out, if that would be helpful?
Sure. Thank you, sir.
All right, so, good morning. Appreciate the introduction. My name's Austin Sachs. I'm with Davenport and Company. We serve as the county's financial advisor. We have been fortunate enough to do so for about the last two decades. And in that role, just for some perspective for the public, we're not a bank, we're not making any loans to the county. We're not selling you any products. We don't have any interest in any capital projects. We're truly here in a fiduciary role to give you all recommendations as to financial topics, and especially when it comes to undertaking a financing, giving you our recommendation. So if you remember about a month ago, my colleague David Rose was here. He sends his best. He gave y'all a presentation on a plan of finance for a series of school capital projects. That plan of finance contemplated a dual-track approach. The first track being via the VPSA, Virginia Public School Authority's pooled financing program. The second track of that approach being a competitively solicited direct bank loan process. And so that process has been completed. So I'm here today to discuss the results of that process, our recommendation, as well as next steps. And so that's what's in the presentation here in front of you. So I'll begin here on page one and just go over some background. And feel free to jump in with any questions, but I think I covered a series of the background. Cover two points on this page. The second bullet, just a series of capital projects related to Weber City and Yuma Elementary, totaling about $5.3 million, like I said. We don't have any interest in the capital projects undertaken. That really is the will of the Board. It's your decision. We're just here to give you recommendations on the most cost-effective way to finance those capital projects. And then the last bullet point here on this page, we did get two proposals in hand. We'll go through those. I think we have some very good results to share with you this morning. On page two here, just to give a sense on, call it overall interest rates. So this is a chart dating back to 1980 at the top of the page. It's called the 20-Bond Index. It's really a bellwether for long-term fixed tax-exempt interest rates. And so why that's important, as a local government, we have the ability to borrow on a tax-exempt basis. And so that allows us to achieve the most cost-effective financing. If you go back to 1980, you're borrowing in the double digits, 10%, 12%. If you follow that graph all the way to present day, 2025, you can see the declining trend. And outside the all-time lows during the pandemic, we're really in a historically favorable, long-term, tax-exempt borrowing environment. On page three here is the alternative. These are reinvestment rates. So a personal finance corollary, fortunate enough to have a savings account, you've probably seen the interest rate on those to increase substantially in the short term. So these fluctuate daily, they're variable, largely driven by monetary policy. But what you see on the left-hand side there is during the pandemic, you were earning about 0%, maybe a couple basis points a dollar saved. Alternatively, now, in and around the 4% range. And so it really gives you the opportunity, which is a benefit. When you borrow dollars, you have the opportunity to generate real interest earnings during the life of the project as those dollars are spent down. So a bit more of a positive relationship there where, you know, during COVID, you could borrow money at 3%, but you're reinvesting it at zero. And so on page four here, so going into the two bank proposals that we received. I'll go through the table kind of in detail, but high level, we received the first proposal from Capital One, a large national institution headquartered in Virginia, technically in Richmond. And then the second proposal we got was from Huntington Bank. They're out of the Midwest in Ohio. And for what it's worth, we've seen both of these banks being very active in our marketplace. So we're very familiar with them. Call it, they're good to work with on their end, they're good for it. So two very, very familiar banks to us. Starting with Capital One, the first thing that we'll look at is the interest rate. That's in that, call it, second column there. For Capital One, you will see two options. You see a 4.60% interest rate and a 4.72%. On the front end here, I'll say we are recommending the 4.6% option. It is the lowest rate of the bank proposals we received. And I'll go into a little bit of detail on the difference between those two rates. The 4.60 assumes that the proceeds are held at Capital One throughout the life of the project. You know, we requisition dollars from Capital One. It does generate interest earnings at Capital One, but we just work with them throughout the life of the project. The 4.72 interest rate says that we can invest the dollars elsewhere. Presumably, in that scenario, it would be Virginia SNAP, a state-run program, but you see the cost of that being 12 basis points over the life of the loan. The second important piece that we'll keep an eye on and really take note of is what we call the prepayment provisions. And so you see there the date October 1, 2032. And so we'll call that a seven-year call date, a seven-year call feature. So for the first seven years, we don't have the ability to prepay the loan. But following that seventh year, this is important, we have the ability in whole or in part to prepay the loan. And so thinking about an in-whole prepayment, that would typically be refinancing. You've had the opportunity with the mortgage, going from a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate for savings. The second part there, the benefit, is this in-part concept. And so say you have some extra dollars within a budget during a year, you could make. And so, say you have some extra dollars within a budget during a year, you could make an extra debt service payment, that'll be applied to the final maturity and lower your payments throughout the term of the loan. So, it gives you that flexibility throughout the loan to make incremental payments. And then the last column here is collateral. These types of financings, the ultimate backstop, the deep pocket, if you will, will be the Board of Supervisors. But these types of financings, no different than a mortgage required, some sort of collateral. Banks will typically look for essential purpose, essential-use buildings. Both Capital One and Huntington have asked for just Weber City, so not both elementary schools, but just the one. The second proposal, I'll go a bit quicker, Huntington Bank, a 4.79, a decent bit higher than that 4.60 from Capital One. They have a three-year call feature there, but only in whole, so you lose that incremental repayment flexibility. And they've also asked for Weber City as collateral in that proposal. On page five here, there's a lot of numbers in the table, but I'll try to explain it rather simply. So, what you're looking at is that 4.60 and 4.72 from Capital One, those are the interest rates that are known today, they can be fixed and locked in for the 20-year term of the loan. And this shows us what those payments would look like under either of those interest rates. So, on the left-hand side, the 4.60, there would be an interest payment due during the fiscal year that we're in, FY '26, and starting FY '27, the next 20 years at $420,000 plus or minus. Just some rounding there, given these loans are issued in $1,000 increments. On the right-hand side, the 4.72, you can see the higher interest rate translates into a bit higher of a payment if we were 4.20 in the first scenario, or at about 4.25 under the 4.72. And so, over the life of the loan translates to about $90,000 more in payments. And so, part of that is our rationale for recommending the 4.60 interest rate, just lower payments over the life of that loan. And then on page six here, just kind of covering the topics that I've hit on previously, but giving some comparison to that second option, VPSA, that I talked about on the front end. Our recommendation is still the Capital One proposal. The real rationale there is we know that interest rate today. VPSA is issued in the public markets, and so that's not scheduled to occur until, call it, the middle part of October. And so, we won't know the interest rate for, you know, 40 days, and interest rates can fluctuate, there's no way to know if they'll go up, if they'll go down. But we like the idea of having something known today, that we know those fixed payments for the life of the loan. The second option, or the second point on this page in the rationale is Capital One is more flexible than VPSA. Bonds issued in the public credit markets typically include a 10-year call feature to protect bond investors for the first 10 years. And so, that seven-year call feature from Capital One, offering us a bit more flexibility than the VPSA option. And then the last point on this page, just making note, similar than if you were to go for a personal loan, both have to go through final credit approval processes. Capital One has given us positive feedback to date, but they have to go through their final credit approvals, but we do not foresee any issues with that going forward. And so, on the last page here, just giving you next steps. And so, we will hold a public hearing, or saying "we" meaning the county. That's for the VPSA option. We'd still encourage going forward with that, just so, you know, that second track is taken care of, or gives us that contingency that that procedurally is taking place. But for the Capital One proposal, we do not need a public hearing. What we would ask, and we've talked to your bond council, is if we could get a simple motion to move forward with Capital One. And that motion can be as simple as, we make a motion to move forward with Capital One's 4.6% proposal. That just gives us the opportunity to express to the bank the board's intent to move forward, let us move forward with some of the transaction logistics, that final credit approval on their end. And then what you'll really see, the balance of this schedule, is the formal approvals from the various boards. And so, if we've got our dates right, October 1st, coming back in front of y'all for the passage of what would be a resolution, financing agreement, things of that nature prepared by bond council. We'd also talk to the school board and get their approval, given the collateral is a school building. And then on the 15th, this type of transaction, given Virginia law requires a conduit issuer, and that would be the Economic Development Authority, they would have no financial liability. The board would still be the deep pocket, but Virginia law requires the EDA to be the conduit issuer on paper only for this financing. The county's done that previously in the past, and so, very familiar and widely used across the state. And so, following those approvals, we'd look to close about two weeks later, call it the end of October, and that's when funds would be accessible to commence on the projects. And so, that's what we have for presentation today. Thank you for the opportunity. Happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sacks?
They're talking about the interest rate going down.
I wish I could say, there's just no way to know. I think the one point that I will make that this year has been a volatile year in terms of interest rates, so there's no way to know whether they'll go up and down. If you remember back in April, quote-unquote Liberation Day, with the tariffs that actually closed the bond markets, there were no bond sales able to take place. People wanted to see what was going to happen. There was so much uncertainty, so we just liked the idea of having an interest rate known today that we can lock in.
There was an application for grants for this project. Do you know the status on that?
I do not know the status, but maybe a...
That would be the school...
No word on that yet, Mr. Sack.
If that comes through, how will that affect what you're doing?
I'm sorry. If we were able to receive the family, remember, we made application, potential to receive a third, 33% of the total project that we designated, we would apply that money toward this particular loan, so that's how that would work. But we have yet to receive any official word, whether or not we were recipients of that grant award or not. I still don't know what to tell you, but we did make application.
Is there a deadline for that? Do you know? Or can that update?
I'm guessing that the announcement will come sometime this month, probably mid or late this month. I just don't know. They have not given a specific timeline when the announcements legally be made. I'm just guessing it'll be mid or late this month.
Okay.
Mr. Fergs, did you get a five-something million grant here a while back for something? It seemed like I seen something in the paper that y'all got...
No, sir. What they were making reference to were lottery monies. We did not receive this individual grant in that regard.
Did you?
That money's included into the basic aid monies, as well as all the state monies that we received through the Virginia Lottery System. We did not get a individual amount. That was, in my opinion, very misleading, because that money's intertwined with the monies that we received from the state.
Okay. I didn't know. I seen that in the paper, and I thought you'd got a grant.
I wish we did, sir. I wouldn't have representatives here speaking before each other.
Well, I couldn't figure why you didn't use that money to build. If you got it, if you didn't get it, you didn't get it.
It's intertwined with the monies that we received from the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any major capital projects that are in development now for school projects?
We have, we presently have, I want to stand up here next to you, but somehow, we presently are finishing up, we're still working on some of our roofing projects at the Career and Technical Center, as well as Twin Springs High School. We just finished some of the heating and cooling upgrades at Rycov High School as well. It's near completion. I'm not sure what the percentage is, but it's closed.
About 70%.
And we're still continuing to work toward that. One of the biggest things when I became superintendent was the age of our roofs. And over the course of time, we have been able to knock out a lot of these in terms of replacement roofs. We've done window upgrades, we've done heating and cooling upgrades. The only coal-fired boiler we sat left now in the county is here at the complex. Everything has been converted over to gas or electric heat. And Mr. Sally, would you like to speak on some of the calls associated with some of these projects? He's here with me now. He keeps me in the loop of everything and what needs to be done. We do have a, kind of like a five-year timeline, a wish list of items that we want to accomplish during that time, but I will say over my, since my tenure superintendent, we have done a lot, and I'm bragging on myself, but I'm bragging on Mr. Sally and what he has done over this amount of time. And I'm very proud of that fact, and we will continue to do so. And I ask your all's blessing with this, this is a need for our school system. With the number of services that we provide for our students, we just don't have the space. As I've shared with you two in previous meetings, one of my biggest concerns is the electricity, the amount of electricity being used on a daily basis. We will have to do some major upgrades in terms of electrical service within our buildings simply because of that. So, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Sally, and he can share with you some of the updates, what we've done here just recently. And I would advise you go visit our schools to see what else takes place. You aren't going to notice it walking into the building, you actually have to, whether climbing on top of the roof, or seeing some of the behind-the-wall updates that have taken place. Mr. Sally?
Yes, I'd be glad to answer any questions for any of the board members specifically to speak about some of the projects that we are currently in right now. The HVAC upgrade that we're doing for Rycov High School is probably the largest project that we have going at this time. We've, I guess, abandoned the use of the coal-fired boilers. We've actually, as far as the maintenance department personnel themselves, we've worked with the installation of new cooling units that is in each and every individual room and in association with Comfort Systems USA, which is our mechanical heating and cooling contractor that we've worked with since 2014. I don't remember if Mr. Jeter was here at that time or not, when we'd done the performance contracting project, but we've had that longstanding relationship with Comfort Systems USA, and they're providing new LP gas boilers that will be replacing, of course, the coal-fired boilers. And we're in the, in progress of actually installation of the piping and stuff with that system now. There's a lot of things that's kind of changing in the industry of HVAC, from the refrigerants being used to also, we've got new indoor air quality testing procedures that was actually just instituted this July. And so, there's a lot of things that's changing in that. Whenever we, a lot of people want to talk about whenever we change out an air conditioner, well, all you got to do is just change one out and put another one in, but there's a lot of indoor air regulations that's kind of going with that now, so it's not quite that simple. With that, between the fresh air, the new heating systems, and the cooling systems, and ductwork and stuff like that, that was a project that, I would say, in the range of probably two and three-quarter to $3 million. So, it was a large project, and then that whole school will be, basically the HVAC will be replaced in every bit of that school. We have continued on, as we had the funds from, and I don't remember the exact names of them, but the funding that we received during COVID and stuff like that, we got into a lot of window replacement projects. We've continued on with some of those and paying those out of the school budget. Mr. Ferguson and the Budget Committee members is approving those projects, and we're continuing on with that, to continue to upgrade the schools where we can. The roofing projects is items that we have been doing on a large scale, I would say, since 2014, and we still have a few of those left, but we've probably replaced the roofs on our buildings on about probably 80% to 85% of our school buildings. So, we're really getting near the replacement of the roofs that was in the 30-year-old range. So, we are, we have buildings that's got roofs on them now that's 20 years old, that that'll be rolling back around for us here in a few years. So, that's some of the large-scale projects that we've been working on. And we have more of those, just like on our capital improvement project list, as far as, we have heating and cooling equipment that's been in schools like Twin Springs and Gate City and Shoemaker, that is hitting the 30-year mark. And it gets tough keeping that equipment running. We put new controls on it in 2014, but we put it on equipment that was 20 years old. And so, we have, Mr. Ferguson has maintained the staff in maintenance, in the budget for 11 to 12 personnel that work down there, and then also an administrative assistant also that's been in the budget, and we've maintained that, with the exception, of course, of some leaving, some coming, retirement and stuff. But through the department, those guys that work in that department bring a good skill to the Scott County schools. That allows us, if any of you have priced any labor, actual labor on anything, it's really, it's very high. So, we answer the everyday calls to doing large projects, such as we've done on this summer over at Rycov High School and other schools. I mean, we do electrical work, we do the HVAC work, we do major plumbing jobs, we do major carpentry jobs, we do renovations. So, the guys in the shop are to be well-commended for the work that they do also in all the schools. I can talk for a long time about it, and I apologize for it, but with that, I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Vocational roof. I know it's bad. Is it on the...
We are replacing an area that a lot of people familiar with, as far as the auditorium, where we had a large event this past weekend, that we're dealing with, removing the old, putting the new back on. Some of the things that people don't realize that goes along with that is there's asbestos in a lot of the curbing of units and things like that. So, there's multiple contractors that's working on that, because we have to have a baked contractors, plus the roofing contractors, and we have to coordinate that stuff together. And then, obviously, as everyone knows, dealing with the rain this year has been a major challenge. So, as that work goes on around the drain lines to old units that have been removed and installed and stuff, it's a challenge, and we've had probably a little bit higher problem than what we normally have, but also the rain's been a little abnormal this past summer, too. But they are nearing the completion of the installation of that, and we have a construction update meeting on that Friday that will have more updates available, and I'm sorry, don't have a better update, but we're near completion of that.
Probably putting a whole new roof.
It's a whole new roof. Yes, sir. It's every, and that's one of the things that people don't realize, too, that the cost that the school system has absorbed with that, is that every building that we've got, it's got two roofs on it. And then also, you throw in the asbestos sometimes, that, I mean, we're, was paying in the range of $11, $12 a square foot, whenever we started this work back in 2014, and we paid as much as $28 to $29 a square foot. And you start thinking about that, I mean, the buildings we got is, you know, 25,000 and 40,000 square feet, they ain't 3,000 square feet like our home, or 1,500 square feet like a home. So, it's a large number whenever we deal with that replacement. But, so, we are, we do remove, there's always, every roof that we do is, really, there's two roofs on that building. So, we remove it back down to the original decking, and we install one new roof on that. And once again, just like a lot of other things, there's a lot of codes to follow, insulation values that have to be met to be able to get that roof back up to code. So, that's something that helps us with our energy efficiency, and then not only that, but our integrity as far as the building and keeping moisture out. And as everyone knows, too, moisture will absolutely ruin a building, so.
To answer your question, Mr. Jeter, regards to that section, that is the auditorium, the upper levels, we make reference to that. we make reference to that, the main building, that is the last section to be completed. The entire second buildings as well as the, from the steps down, going toward the second building, all that has been replaced, it's just that upper level.
Well, it needs it.
It'll be finished, yes.
Yep, and that's, the career tech will be completely done at that time. So we have, Twin Springs High School is another school that will be completely done in probably any day now. It's another one we got a construction update meeting on Friday. But when I was there on this past Friday, they just had maybe about four thousand square feet left of that. And so once again, that's one where they're removing it down to the existing decking. And then like the career and tech center also, I mean, they had some areas that has metal decking and where moisture had got down into that metal decking, it rusted out. And so we have to actually get down and even replace some of the metal decking before we go back with the roof. So that's other items that, I know it's maintenance stuff, like I said, I can talk about it a long time, but that's a cost that we incur in time that adds to the finished part of the project.
I didn't have any maintenance questions, but I did have population, student count. Mr. Ferguson, I talked to you last year about your forecast for the next ten years with student population, and you thought it would remain steady. No big changes either way. There was a study done by the University of Virginia, Welton Cooper Center.
Yes.
And it's in the Cardinal News recently, August twelfth. Southwest Virginia and South Side of Virginia are projected to have major population decreases in the next twenty-five years. Some examples, Buchanan County, they expect fifty percent reduction in population. Lee, Wise and Russell, thirty. Scott is better at eighteen. So they're projecting Scott County to have eighteen percent population decline in the next twenty-five years. But you said that you felt like in the next ten, that student count would be steady. You still feel that way?
In fact, to answer your question, we've actually seen an increase in the student population this year. And it's not due to the fact we have had increases. Children residing have a Tennessee address, but the majority are coming from within the county. We have a large population of homeschool students, which pushes about two-hundred-and-eighty, which is up about forty from last year. But we've seen an increase of families moving into the area as well as some who I guess maybe have been on the homeschool track to come back to our schools. So we have seen the increase. Unfortunately, the projection that the state had provided back in the spring is wrong. It's off. So we have seen an increase in that regard. Some schools fluctuate a little bit, up to maybe fifty additional students. And others actually lost some. But we have seen an increase in the student population. Now whether or not they stay with us for the entire year, that's a different story, but physical bodies in the building, we have seen an increase.
Could you give us a head count? How many kids is in Scott County schools at this time?
Yes, sir, I've got that number. It's right in person, thirty-two hundred, over.
That's about what we had last year, wasn't it?
Thereabouts, yes. But we have seen the increase. And where they come from, how they found Scott County, is beyond me. But I'm glad they're here.
What does it usually cost to educate each kid in the county, would you say?
Well, if you look at the numbers that Mr. Skeen had shared earlier this year, it's going to be anywhere from the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range in actual state funding. The county's portion is a little over three thousand per child. And the federal, federal be included in that twenty, thereabouts. We don't receive, we've received quite a bit of, I won't say quite a bit, but we receive several million from the federal end of it.
Do you remember the PowerPoint we went through that I shared that with?
Right, right.
And I know Mr. Skeen made a comparison of Scott County and Wise County. Mr. Skeen, Wise County's budget was ninety million dollars, not seventy million, as you alluded to when you spoke to me earlier in regards to that, in terms of the population. It's over ninety million dollars in Wise County. So I shared with you, and I care less what Wise County does, even though I have good friends there. I'm more worried about Scott County.
You also made a statement a few months ago that you didn't care about it after two years because you was going to be out of here.
I never said that.
You never said that.
I never said after two years.
Didn't you say you's going to retire after two?
I didn't say anything about retirement. I said, Mr. Skeen wanted to know what the ten-year plan was. I said, well, Mr. Skeen, I'm not going to be here in ten years.
Okay, so I take it the wrong way, then?
I never, I don't know where you got the two years from.
Did you hear about Mr. Skeen?
I was thinking ten years.
Did you hear it, Jeter?
That's been too long for me.
I don't know why that.
Did you, did you hear? I guess that nobody heard it but me and Eddie Skeen, so I guess.
I could be wrong, but it would be in a minute if it's, if it's a.
But either way, it's no big deal. I plan on staying here more than two years, and I'm sure you did too. But I maybe I take it wrong, okay?
I don't know what the relevance is in regards to how long I'm here or not, Mr. Ferguson.
Well, no, nobody does. But I mean, that's the way I take it, after two years, you really didn't care.
I never used the word two years at any point in time. He asked me what my ten-year, what the ten-year plan is. I said, in ten years, it won't make a difference to me because I won't be here in this position.
Yes, exactly the way you did word it, after two years.
Ten, ten. I didn't say two, but I said ten.
We'll be in a minute, so we'll, we'll check it. But you, but you did word it that way, I will slow down, okay?
I never used the word two.
Okay.
After ten years.
Of course, I've been told by the board I need to hear it, so maybe I do.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Sally and Mr. Sacks. Appreciate you guys talking with us. We are going to open, open the public hearing now. If anyone, let me bang on it. If anyone would like to come up and speak on this topic, please come forward. Sack, your name, please.
David Carter, Salons Monument Lane. Been coming over here for approximately the last eight or nine years to most of the meetings. Some of them here, not, I watch them on YouTube. Last year or so, some of the actions, innuendos and so forth, to me as a citizen, a lifetime citizen of Scott County, has been embarrassing. For instance, just a second ago. My wife and I, we don't have any kids. But I've been in, working in the school system as a volunteer coach for probably fifteen years. I've coached travel ball, I've coached kids from Rycov, I've coached kids from Twin Springs, I've coached kids from Gate City, from Lee County, Wise County. And people say, why do you do it? Because hopefully I'll make a little bit of difference in helping these kids. And as the gentleman bus driver said, those kids are the most important thing. And to, and support of those kids in the school system is the most important thing. And what I thought was pretty embarrassing last month was a five-two vote. I thought that was pretty embarrassing for the county. What is it, what kind of message does that bring to the students? What kind of message does that bring to the teachers that are working out here every day trying to help these kids? You know, Mr. Ferguson came up and said, you know, all he was asking for was your blessings to improve. Weber City, to improve the UMA? Well, and we know why the, why the two votes were. And I want to commend Ms. Edding for her proposal, not a proposal, for her, her projection, her PowerPoint presentation that she did two months ago. She didn't, she did her research. She didn't throw out any numbers, or they said, she said, he said, you know. She had it all down. She had the formula down of how it all works, how the funding works. So, yeah, there's probably some kids that come over here from Tennessee. But you know, as I said, I've coached softball for a number of years. There's kids in Russell County that go to Wise County, there's kids in Wise County that go to Lee County, there's kids at Lee County that goes to Wise County. I even know some kids that came from Kentucky into Wise County. So, you know, a few from over here, if they're from Tennessee for whatever reason, do, we penalize everybody else by not voting to fund at nothing cost to the taxpayer, right?
Right.
Not costing the taxpayer any more money to help these kids. So I would just say in closing that today's vote should be six oh because Mr. Magnus is not here versus two net votes. Thank you.
So, hang on one second. In other words, you oppose bringing more Tennessee kids to Scott County school system?
I don't. No, I don't.
You don't oppose that?
I'm sorry?
I said, do you want more kids from Tennessee coming to their schools to get a better education or whatever there?
If they can get a better education here, I'm all for it.
You're all for it?
I'm all for it.
If tax people, the citizens of Scott County, if their taxes goes up, are you for that too?
If the taxes go up? You're saying the taxes are going to go up specifically for?
I don't know, what is specifically for, it's everybody votes.
Okay, well, see, you're throwing out those innuendos right there, you know, what if, ifs and ifs, you know.
Well, I'm going to make a statement, put this camera right here. I'm going to take and try to get all the Tennessee kids and the surrounding counties to come to Scott County schools because, I mean, it seems like that we want to educate them all. So I welcome all to come here because it seems like that's what we want, that's what they want. I'm all for it, as long as it don't raise the taxes on the citizens of Scott County.
I'm saying that.
Does anyone else want to speak on this topic? Can I close this public hearing? Is there any discussion between the board members?
Madam Chair, if I may, just want to reiterate what Mr. Ferguson had said in the past about this particular project as far as being able to make the payments. That it's not any additional ask of the taxpayers or of the board. This is more of a formality to move forward with this project. And that way, Mr. Ferguson can move, you know, go ahead and get what it needs with Weber City and UMA. So I guess what the ask of the board would be just a motion or board action to approve going with that Capital One, four-point-six percent proposal.
I'll remind you that the gentleman from Davenport did say that the county's, I think he said deep pockets and using the Weber City school as collateral. So I think it's more than, of course, they have a real good record. I think it'll make, you know, that's probably not going to happen default. But that's why we're here today. We have to cover any defaults.
The school is the collateral. The school is the collateral.
School properties, which is on the Scott County. I'm just saying it's, the reason these years, there are some risks, okay? It's not risk-free, but they have a good record of that.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve or move forward with the Capital One. I want to make sure I get this right. Four-point-six, six percent rate? Proposal. Is that all? Four-point-six proposal, rate proposal. With Capital One. As reviewed by, that Mr. Sacks from Davenport. My goodness, are you having the nay or am I?
Well, I'm going to second that motion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Did you say yes?
All right, got a four-two vote.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. All right, moving along. Item seven B is a public hearing also. Possible adoption of an ordinance authorizing bonuses for county employees. I open this public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this topic? Please come forward. Okay, there's no one. I close this public hearing. Any discussion with the board members?
After I think of the bonus. What, did this happen last year? Of course, I'm asking you, but I know you weren't here, but do you have any knowledge of it?
Ms. Sally can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we ever had anything on the books for bonuses. That's kind of why we're bringing this ordinance up. Just so it will have something actually, you know, policy about bonuses.
And this also came from the Department of Social Services because they get bonuses from the state and then it comes into our payroll. And then, you know, we've got to pay that out. Well, there, we don't have any ordinance saying that, you know, we can do that. So we need to have an ordinance so that we can give these folks their bonuses from the state when they do get those.
Just the pastor, basically.
It's a pastor, yeah.
And would this, would also involve all employees in the county?
So it would give that ability, you know, if the board would so choose.
That would be a review process once that happened for a county.
So today, if you choose, you'd need to adopt the ordinance and also approve the bonus for the ones that are getting it this year. Do you can do that in one motion?
Social services.
Yeah, and others from the state.
I'll make that motion, Mrs. Chairman.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All righty, new business. We have Alan Sumter with VDOT here this morning for an update. Welcome, Mr. Sumter. You're a very popular man.
Good morning. That's good or bad?
Good morning.
Okay, so I'll try to jump right in too.
Okay, so I'll try to jump right into it. So, just some general comments that to start off with. You have the, the report that we passed out to you. I'll cover some items that, on it in more detail. You see the list of the things that we have received that have come in through different members of you all that have come, maybe inadvertently left something off, not sure. But we have been working on several items. The, getting into one of the things, I know that one of our greatest work order call-in that we have had lately has been on mowing and that's understandable. As the gentleman pointed out, from school board, it's been so wet this year and it's been hard to stay ahead of the mowing and growing faster about it than we know, particularly the Johnson grass is just unreal. To compound that, we've had breakdowns in tractors that have taken a while to get repaired. As an example, Fort Blackmore was downed like to one tractor instead of the three that they usually use for a few weeks that put them behind. But we have all the tractors up and going now in both Fort Blackmore and Patensville. And we seem to, I talked with both superintendents yesterday, and we seem to be making a lot of progress moving forward. So, they are currently mowing, Patensville is mowing in the Mannville area and they've been moving to make Stanley Town area next and then will move into Rock Cove. Fort Blackmore is mowing in the Nicholsville area and they'll be mowing in Fort Blackmore and Duganet area next. They're also limaxing on seventy-two and sixty-five. All areas have been mowing for site distance and spot mowing locations. On twenty-three, we've begun our primary mowing again and they are about down to Bray Road right now at this time. That usually goes pretty quickly and I was told that they have been mowing also on fifty-eight toward the Washington County line as well. So, I'm sorry that we have had these difficulties. It's caused problems. It's been frustrating to us too, but we're trying to work as diligently as we can to try to catch up. Also, as far as mowing, I also was told that they were finishing up the Twin Springs area. They've mowed in Big, Big Moccasin and that they have, on the Patensville side of the Rock Cove, they've been mowing in Alley Valley, Rock Cove area. And we also took care of the site distance problem of Danny Yoc Circle. That was another thing that came up. So, we're trying to get there and hopefully we will soon see some slowdown in the growth with colder weather moving in and we will keep working even after it frost to try to make sure everything's mowed and taken care of as quickly as we possibly can on the mowing. The next item I'll just touch on is the Route seventy-two Sincole. That was the area where that we had water going under the ditches and down into like a cave-like area across the road. We've been working on that. We've got the excavation and backfill completed. We were working also now into the ditches. Our plan is that we're going to fill material down in the, in the ditches and then put riprap over the top of it and then grout it over the top of it to try to keep the water from going and seeping down into underneath the roadway and hopefully eliminate that problem from happening in, in the future. So, we're looking at about another two weeks of work left for the completion of that. I'm going to skip down just a second to the, the rural rustic portion of it. As I've talked before, in our four counties residency wide, we have experienced quite a bit of both Hurricane Helene work that we, we now have completed and also February flooding event that turned out to be a declared event that we get federal reimbursement from as well. So, we've been trying to use our resources residency wide through our four counties to meet our deadlines that they've given us like by the, the first of December to make sure that we have all of our work done and paving, patching and everything completed. That's a requirement that we have to abide by. So, we've had to shift some resources around and some of that has been with paving, work with our patching contractors. So, we, we anticipated that we thought that we would get started on MB Cooper and Eaton Hill on the paving this month, but I am, am starting to believe that it will probably be October or so before we get paving. Still have plenty of paving weather unless it just turns unusually cold, but that's just unavoidable because of our obligation with the federal funds for every, where the department, as you know, we're trying to maximize all our funds as we can and get every dollar we can too. So, we're trying to get this work done so we can get a maximum reimbursement as much as possible on all of the roads that were damaged throughout our residency and the same applies for the entire Bristol District that we have. So, that's just something that we've had to juggle our resources with. We are going to start Horton Summit here in October and we will begin doing work on it that will not make it a muddy mess to the winter, but we will do things possibly like trimming trees and pipe installations and things like that. We won't disturb things too much and that one will be completed next year. And we also are also working on Obie's Creek as well, Route six sixty. So, we have four projects that are currently underway on our rural restics, which we're very pleased about with that, especially given all the other demands that we've had and trying to do all these flood repairs and so forth. So...
Tell me to say hello.
Tell Tony I said hello. So, on, another item that I wanted to go over was on project updates for you. There's some important things that I wanted to make sure that we got information out. Our construction folks will be doing as well, but I kind of want to go over with you here. So, I asked Bill to put up for you the Google Maps for that Duffield and I don't guess, Bill, you can get the yellow lines off of it, can you?
Sure.
Should we do that? Okay. Okay. So, this is a pointer, isn't it? Is this a pointer?
That one point on the, uh...
What point on those?
Here, you can use the mouse.
Okay.
Take your arrow, where do you want to go?
Okay. Okay, so, I don't know, Mr. Magnus is well enough to be listening today or not, but he's the one we've been talking to the, some of the most about, but does concern everybody. So, as you know, if you traveled through, we are doing intersection improvement here in Duffield at the intersection of twenty-three and Route fifty-eight. This goes toward Tempur-Pedic and toward Lee County and this goes toward Wise County and this back toward Gate City. So, the project that we have in place now that we're doing is that we are putting a dual left turn lane to come this direction here. Okay, so that's the project that's underway at this time. There is a signal pole located in the median on both sides of the intersection. The signal poles will be relocated and the signal, one of them pole will be put over here and the other one will be put...
You just go to out here whoever's sitting real quick.
And then get it excavated out, the forms put in, and then get the concrete poured probably Monday, and then hopefully reopen it sometime late Tuesday is their plan that they've told me. So, and I remember one thing, Mr. Dean, I don't believe I responded back to you yet on, but the sign that you sent me on 669, that is related to the Mineral Hill Bridge project. And our roadway people are trying to get in contact with the property owner there about easements, and they've been unsuccessful. And so the standard process is they put the sign out, making it aware, and then they take steps to whatever they need to, whether it be an abandonment or whatever there, or not imminent domain action or whatever there is. But that's what that is there in that location. Before I be quiet and see if you all have anything, then I will address Mr. Baker's question about the private ditches. And the technical and legal answer for that is, is that we really don't allow that private work to be done like that because of liabilities and things that might occur. If we just, I would guess probably a bigger part of the people would probably do a good job and make it look real good, but there's always the chance that somebody may go in and dig it two days and alter the drainage of some kind that would end up causing some kind of a legal lawsuit or something out of that. So that's why the answer that's kind of is, you know, it's no. We do have, like if people are going to do work in front of their homes or whatever, we do have options for them. Like if they want to make modifications to do a land use permit, but again, there's cost and bonds and things associated with that. So we know there's a lot of ditching that's out there and pots to be cleaned as well. They get stopped up, especially a lot of the rain like we've had, but we try to address those as we can as well. Okay. So you all have any questions for me?
Yeah. There was a road guy called in a couple of weeks ago, rural town, and someone called it Copper Creek from 71 back to Mammoth Road. They had mowed it about four or five weeks ago, but the brush is in the road from where you turn off the 72 and turn down Copper Creek out.
Is that on the Riddington Road or is that real town or on the?
Yeah, but it's even, I think a rural town comes up there to, the one comes back up towards Allen Valley. I don't know the road number, what they call it. But I know it's real bad on the side of that hill where it's so steep. Like I said, I thank you for getting that fixed on 65 and on number 72 the other day. That sure got a fine fine job. Then Mammoth through there, it's drove up pretty good too places. Of course, it's a lot of places it's drove up. And I know Pat's Field told me their machine had been tore up and looking for parts. And that's one reason they got behind like you did.
Right. The one thing with the boomax, as I call it, is that that's a machine that we can run during the winter. So we'll probably continue running it through the winter on some of these. Actually, you have less of a mess afterward.
Where you see Bill.
Yes, in the winter.
The road that you're showing, Duffield, yes, I see the guys get over the medium or the divider, take it and trying to get out there and give it a two way thing. That would help a great deal. A thing that I've mentioned several times to state police and different things, they said they, but nobody ever listened. From Spirit's Ferry back down towards Clenchport, it's very small dividers there. And the curve has been blacktops and much curves probably no higher than four inches. Several years ago, I remember two elderly ladies crossed it, and I think they lost her life. It maybe hit a guardrail because of traffic traveling north and south. And like I said, she lost control and ran across it. I think it was her or sister. I used to see them on a daily basis. These elderly ladies, they sure never was making the speed limit. So they.
That would have to be like, as I mentioned, I call them H-SIL, Highway Safety Improvement type projects. I mean, we can ask our traffic engineer to look at it and see if it might be something to qualify. But for us just to go out there and put the guardrail in, we couldn't just do that. It would be rather involved too because of the types of mounts that's there and a lot of the concrete mediums and so forth that's there. It'd be a pretty expensive project. So, but we can ask them to take a look and see if that's a feasible time project for submission at some point.
I've even seen some trucks, one time a stander broke and wood went across the over line. Another thing though, that we talked about like Duffield or you was, when are they ever going to start on this project up here, the water hole gap, the first stage of it to the state line, and tie it back into 71 and 72 or?
I'm not sure which project.
The one that we just talked about at the X zone.
Talking about the Moxon Gap bypass? Is that what you're talking about? It's currently, it's kind of on hold or there's?
It's been on hold for almost 25 years.
There's no plans right now moving forward at present time.
Well, that's, I mean, to me, that's one thing that definitely needs to be fixed in the county. Just because what you just said, the road's going to be shut down. And if we had that, we'd have maybe a two way in and two way out. That's definitely something I've talked to Terry Kilburg about it several times in the last 10 years or so. And I want to get all that, get the process ready now.
Became a very, very expensive project. The last estimate that's been a few years since I've seen that was like $85 to $90 million top project. So very hefty project.
I had a question I got a call last night on OB Creek. I know you're doing the preliminary work fair now. Will any of that road be widened? They're telling me that there's no room to pass and they've got it backed up in some places.
Well, again, a rural rustic project, we try to get any widening that we possibly can, but that's part of those types of projects is that we build them on existing roadways. So anything that we can do that widen within that limit, we will, but it will be limited.
The other thing, the speed limit on that road, what's the secondary road speed limit?
On a paved secondary roadway in Commonwealth, Virginia, if it does not have a speed limit and it's paved hard surface, it is statutory 55 unless, unless otherwise. A rural rustic project, once completed, they are set at 35 on those, on rural rustics.
You and I have talked or communicated with the Johnson Grass situation that you were shooting for three times on secondary road mowers. Is that still a possibility?
We, I think it's still a possibility. We're going to see as we go along how that the weather unfolds with cooling temperatures and things like that. We may not have to go full second or third mowing everywhere, but I anticipate there will be a number of routes that we will have to mow again.
I've mentioned before, and you've heard it today, each time I've contacted you as a follow-up, it's always been that. I can't remember a single time that things were not addressed, and we do appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir. We try to do our best. That's a lot of support with me working, helping me to accomplish that. When we have these instances, sometimes folks don't get contacted as quickly as they have been. It's not that they're trying to be avoided or whatever. It's just the fact that we just have a lot going on and trying to get things accomplished. And it's, it's kind of like sometimes dealing like with, you know, forest fires. You can stomp out one here and then another one pops up here. And then meantime, you're trying to plan work to do. And so it affects what we have planned. And so got a big juggling act to do. And I really, really credit goes to our area headquarters folks for accomplishing that.
Mr. Son? On Yuma Road, right before you get to the old Oakland Church, there's a place there on the left. That Todd has looked at several times. They came and put up some reflectors there, but they've been several breaks there because the edge of the road drops off about four foot straight down. They tried to, talked about putting baskets in there and building the edge of the road out. They talked about a guardrail through there, but they can't find no guardrail post that's long enough. But they did put those three reflectors up beside the road, which helped. If you get crowded there, you're over the, if you drop off pavement, you're flipped. There's been several accidents there. I don't know what he's finally looked at.
We'll get back with Todd and then get with him and see what he's come up with. Come up with and see if there's any way we can help him with it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. You done used your quarter.
You can lay down, man. Don't bother. I'm a young big boy. I mentioned something last year, 065 down there next to the John Sallin Mine Room, about the cones. Somebody stuck it up y'all's edge. Y'all didn't notice the orange cone. I mentioned it last year, the orange cone's still there. And as Jesus talked about, they had put some baskets in other places there. And I know V-Dot didn't go down by there and look at it because I see them looking at it. But they never fixed it. And they, a lot of trucks has been running that. I don't know if they're hauling NASCAR revs or raw water through there.
Danny, where exactly is that?
Between Slane and the John Sallin Mine Room on Highway 65. Okay, it's a couple of places. There's another one right there next to Slane Church. It's had a hole in the road there for, I know well over a year. And Mr. Baker there, that when he talked about these ditches, I have to say, dirt ditch lines covers. 50% are messed up. I check them. I look at them. And it seems like nobody can touch them. I hear that these guys will dig forward if they clean the ditches out.
No, what the situation is, is that we are under requirements from Department of Environmental Quality that we have to have permit clearance before we can do any ditching. We have certain routes that are clear that we can work in without permits, but a lot of them we have to have permits. And then if we disturb more than 10,000 square feet, we have to have like an erosion and settlement control plan in place. So if anybody has said that, what they're referring to is that they don't want to get in trouble with DEQ there with that and get us in trouble with dealing with that. But nobody is threatening anybody being fired or whatever with the situation.
Some have told me that they can't dig ditches like in wet areas like, we'll say 65 up the river. Said it's like certain times of the month that they can just dig like three or four times, three or four months out of a year.
There is. A lot of these have, have to be checked for, you know, endangered species and things of that nature. And so we do have a lot of restrictions on us in that area.
But if you can get it approved or however, I will tell you 50% of my coverage in this county is stopped up. And on your way, you live in Wise County?
No, I just work in Wise County.
Okay. I was going to say, I'd like you to stop, and I mentioned it here a few months ago, out there Rockmore Road between Best Hill Hollow Road and Stanley Town. It's a water hole been there ever since I've been big enough to remember. I'm 66 years old. I will guarantee you, if you go around there, you will find it because it'll be highway across the road. It's never been fixed in that, in that many years. I've called it in and I was out by there Saturday and I was laying in the road there two foot deep. So if you can do something for that, like I said, it's never been fixed since I can remember.
We'll take a look. You got something to say, Mr. Baker? You got something to say, Mr. Brakers? I see you throwing your hand down.
Can I speak? I just wanted to ask Mr. Sutter. Tennessee claims all every one of their ditch lines and they're faulted. And they're all saying the EPA is keeping y'all from doing it. I think they did it. And Virginia, they're being able to.
What are you, when I'm a state.
They're cutting the EPA, most of the employees out and cutting up the people.
I'm referring to the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality.
It's DEQ, isn't it?
Well, is, don't they work for the EPA or are they wrong?
No, they're, they're an independent agency just like we are.
Well, who, who's over that?
I don't know who, who they are, but they.
I mean, they're holding, they're holding us up, Mr. Sutter, not nothing against you. You all were doing a wonderful job with.
From the hill, thank y'all.
And the manpower that you've got.
Yes, they are.
I'm not saying anything about that. Uh, but somebody needs to draw the line here somewhere. I don't know what you all want to do here. Thank y'all for letting me speak.
Sally, Bill, uh, I asked about, uh, Fields, Myron Fields, is the creek down through there about being cleaned out? Did y'all go by there and see that?
Myron Fields, you're talking about, uh,
Yes.
The flood issue?
Yeah.
Now, we've had several agencies there, NRCS and Greenra and Scott Jarrell with the Extension Office has.
I know that you called me and I didn't get to meet you. I didn't get it till later. Saturday, that's when I went by the water hole again. Reminded me. Is Gary McNew up there, calling up there towards Stanley Town where the creek goes under the road, uh, going on that toward. May, it's, uh, ain't about five foot deep where it's filled up. It's rough too above Myron Fields. It's, and, uh, I had talked to Myron at least two or three times since I talked to y'all. And he said he had never, nobody had ever contacted him. And, uh, so as a reason I brought it up, and even on up the creek that I know definitely.
Since, nobody's contacted him since the day we met with him on, on his place?
Uh, the way I take it, nobody had contacted him. Or he said he hadn't heard anything back from nobody. That's the way I'm gonna have to work that. But, uh, that creek there, I have seen it getting out and come down through by the church at Stanley Town and out Hunter's Valley, down through there and go through there next to Myron Fields' house. Um, I mean, I've seen that years ago before the latest flood. So I'm, I'm telling you, it's, it's really gonna get Myron Fields' house in time or something. Ain't done with it. And if y'all didn't do anything, maybe the reason I brought it up, it's running across the road. Because I waited to do it with a pickup and if you tried it with a car, you wouldn't have got through it head on, I mean. So.
I'm pretty sure they won't let us get into the creek.
No, no. John King told me that when he done it at Bear, for Blackmore, he got a hold of FEMA. And he said he didn't have no big deal. He said they was easy to work with. And I told Mr. McNew that, uh, what Mr. King told me before he faced the way he had, uh, so it ain't no creek there. It ain't nothing but rock. The water's underneath the rock. As I was out there looking at it, Saturday.
Maybe you can look into it and just get back with him.
Okay.
You got anything else, Mr. Sutter?
No.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you.
All right, y'all have.
Thank you for listening.
If, um, my plan will be to come back December. And you'll be my next trip, okay?
Sounds like a plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, it's okay. Board, let's take a ten, a fifteen minute break.
Thank you.
And we'll be right back, fifteen minutes. No, okay. Well, if I didn't have these.
But remember, fifty, they might have sent, they have played that way, Dave, but I believe they.
Okay, we're gonna bring this meeting back to order and we're still in new business. Next, we have Jeff Bricky with presentation on our emergency plan.
Let's see, Jeff, can you get the rubber one out here?
Oh, I took it. Good morning.
Good morning.
Jeff Bricky with Scott County Emergency Management. I'm your emergency management coordinator for the county. And we'll give you an overview of the Scott County's emergency operations plan. And that's a plan that we operate off during emergencies, but also there's things that go on from day to day in the county. And it may be incidents that don't rise to the level of an emergency, but they still need to be handled. So the basic plan that we have, and this follows the state's template, the state, all across the state jurisdictions that have emergency operations plan uses the same template that has the same layout in it, and we follow that layout with ours. And that is dictated by the Virginia disaster and emergency laws as amended from time to time by the state legislature. And our basic plan, and there's about thirty-three pages in the basic plan, but I just want to go over some of the basic plans, the things that drive this. Of course, the first thing is plan approval. So this plan, the state requires the plan to be reviewed and reapproved by board supervisors at least every four years. So we'll be due by next year to have a, for a new plan to be rolled out. And when we say a new plan, generally we're updating the information, we're gathering that as we go through time. And if it's things that have changed, we're doing those things in real time for emergencies. We don't wait until we put that in the plan. If somebody, a position changes, or a name changes, or an agency changes something, we're using that in real time. So that's approved by the board when a plan is rolled out. There's resolutions adopted to meet state and federal standards. So there may be changes in federal law that come along. You know, you hear a lot about changes in FEMA, that a lot of the FEMA aid and operations may be passed down to the state level. So that may bring about changes of how we operate. The purpose of the plan, of course, is provide for the life safety and the property and the environment of the citizens of the county. We do a risk analysis, we do a risk analysis to determine if there's any changes, if something new happened out here that we're not aware of. And one of the things that you're hearing a lot more buzz about is, for example, cyberterrorism and that type of thing. And we'll talk about that in just a moment, as far as where that comes into the plan. Well, the concept of operations is how we operate during an emergency. So the same agencies do all the same things that they're doing all along, and that's your law enforcement, firefighters, EMS, and public works. And these are the core agencies that we rely on to get things done. It also has the organization and assignment of responsibilities. So who is responsible for what in the county and those agencies, and what we do day to day to maintain this? And then it has the authorities and references, which comes back to what it's based on in the state law and the Code of Virginia. So the basic part of the plan that has the emergency support functions and ESFs, and these are all of the agencies, what they do, and it outlines what each of their duties are. So the county doesn't have a highway department, but we depend on VDOT to maintain the roads. So ESF-1 goes into that part of it about how the transportation, how we interact with VDOT and what's done in emergencies. ESF-2 handles communications, how warnings are transmitted to the county, how they come through the 911 center, how emergencies are reported to the county, how that information is sent out to the emergency organizations in the county to get them to emergencies, not only in disasters, but also in day-to-day operation. ESF-3 is public works, and that's the Scott County's public works, and that's handling a whole lot of stuff out there. That's handling everything from assistance when we do sheltering, that's assistance when we're doing the things such as debris collection and management of waste and that type of thing that may be collected out of storms and this type of thing. ESF-4 is our firefighting, which is our seven volunteer fire departments in the county and their roles in emergencies. ESF-5 goes into emergency management, which is the operation of the coordinator and the board of supervisors. And we're standing in the emergency operations center right here. So back in the storage room back here, we have the cabinets that have equipment in them, the forms and all the stuff we work with, and our telephones that we set up. And we can roll those right out here and set those things up and set up our EOC, emergency operations center we need to. ESF-6 handles mass care, housing, and human resources, which falls under, under the Code of Virginia, the Department of Social Services is in charge of mass care and housing for people in disasters. Now, they are assisted by and work with the American Red Cross, but we don't have an American Red Cross chapter in the county. So we're dependent on, say, the Bristol chapter of the American Red Cross. And in major disasters, if we need a lot more sheltering supplies than we normally have, which we keep on hand about thirty-five cots, and the small mattresses, blankets, and pillows, and we have a trailer that we have those stored in. And we'll go back to our public works, they will move it to whatever shelter site that we have to select. ESF-7 gets into resource support, which falls into the purchasing department, which buys the stuff that we may need and place orders for, and procures those things. ESF-8 is public health and medical services, which includes the health department and also the ambulance services, and also our relationships with the hospitals in the region that may receive patients from the county. ESF-9 goes into search and rescue, not only our resources at the county, but maybe other teams that have to be brought in. And also in that relationship, if you have an earthquake or some situation that requires the mobilization of federal teams that come in from out of state and/or from maybe other regions in the state. For example, these may be teams that handle collapse rescue, earthquake search and rescue. These are teams, for example, in the United States that are also sent overseas at times when we assist other countries, but they're available here to help us. ESF-10 covers oil and hazardous materials, any discharge, and again, I also serve as the hazardous materials coordinator for the county. So any of these reports of that, I go out and investigate them and document what happens, and then determine what resources we need to do to take care of that. ESF-11 covers agriculture and natural resources, which we work with Scott Juro, with the Agriculture Office and those agencies which do damage assessment to determine what's happened in our farmlands and crops and that type of thing. ESF-12, energy, which we have several electrical providers in the county. So when we have major outages, we're talking to them to determine some type of timeline where they have restoration coming, and how we can assist them, are there priorities for roads that may be, need to be opened so that they can get their trucks into these areas? So we normally talk to them about that, and we work with VDOT to coordinate maybe some of the roads that need priority to be opened. ESF-13 is public safety and security, which is law enforcement, which the sheriff oversees that, and that covers several areas in that. For an example of that, if you, if you're sheltering and you have people in a shelter, they normally want a law enforcement official there because we may have to screen people coming into a shelter because there's legal aspects, maybe people have protective orders against people. You're also screening people to see if there's no pedophiles that's coming into shelters and hanging out. So, and that's happening in other places. ESF-14 is long-term community recovery mitigation, and we're in that process now. We've been talking to the FEMA folks and the state folks about maybe projects that we can tie into that can maybe help prevent things from happening that's already happened that could have damaged the county. And some of these things, for example, maybe mitigation, for example, looking for grants that can get generators for school buildings and that type of thing. So those can be expensive projects, so you have to look for money for those things. ESF-15 is external affairs, which includes the county's portion of the board's dealing, maybe with our congressional delegation, the federal folks and this type of thing when we're declaring an emergency or we're asking for assistance, and they may need to talk to these people and further our, build our case in order to get assistance. The two that's been added in the last few years is EFF-16, which is military support. And that, again, is where we may request military assistance and activation, and we have to define to the governor's office when they declare a state emergency and we declare an emergency, specifically what we want the military to do. Do we want transportation? It may be equipment. Now, our local guard is a transportation company, so they've got a lot of trucks, but they don't necessarily have a lot of other heavy equipment. So that might have to be brought in from somewhere else in the state. And again, that's paid for out of the governor's office. ESF-17, donations and volunteer support, and that doesn't sound real important, but from FEMA's aspect, that has been. And an example has been when they had Hurricane Andrew in Florida, there was so much stuff that was brought in from out of state, tractor and trailer loads. People would say, well, we've got a tractor and trailer load to the supermarket in the community, we want everybody to bring out stuff to send to these people who have been hit by hurricane or disaster. Unfortunately, all this stuff was unusable. People clean out their closets and they'd send all their winter coats and everything to Florida, or their junk or whatever. So a lot of it became unusable. So most of the times in a lot of disasters in these areas, they're really asking for money to buy debit cards so that people can buy stuff at Walmart or whatever. And, but managing volunteers is important because you'll have people who will self-report to areas and want to go out to help, but you don't know who they are. Or they'll go to somebody's house, maybe another person, and try to help them, and then turn around and give them a bill for cleaning up their yard or fixing their roof or something. So we have to be on the lookout for those. We try to register people to do that, and if they're church groups or people that are organized to do that, then we try to vet them to see that they are legit and try to send them where they may be needed in the community to help people. The support annexes that go to support the ESFs are very important in that because these are things that go on day to day, that's not just, and may involve outside agencies. So information technology, IT, that's a big one, which comes back to when we were talking about, I mean, go cyberterrorism and the protecting our, not only our communications, but our computers and our other stuff, that we're not getting bombarded with maybe false information, and also managing what goes out to the public. And, you know, rumor control, that type of thing, that people see stuff or hear stuff, and it may not be true. So that's a really important aspect of emergency management. Debris management is a big thing because if you've got all this stuff that's being collected, you've got to have somewhere to put it, it's got to be sorted. If it's metal, there's a difference between, of course, trash metal, household waste, trees and logs and limbs. And we just went from that, here just in Helene, we have a whole lot of that stuff out there. VDOT takes care of a lot of their stuff out there, and I think they've been taking it down on Bray Road down there, and they have a place down there that they dispose of it. Dam safety, well, Bark Camp Lake, and the state has a plan of their own for Bark Camp Lake in the event of, that they see that there may be endangered, for example, from a release from the dam, and that's an earthen dam. And they do a survey, they have engineers check that, and they have their plan, and they tell us how they're handling that. There's one other dam that, that we're concerned with, that we get plans on. Do you know which one that is?
Brink's Ferry?
Uh, no, that's, that's a Wise Canyon.
Not now.
Hopefully that drains it away. Fort Patrick Henry Dam. And you remember when they were doing all this work over here on Fort Patrick Henry? And in TVA's plan, and I have a copy of it, back, they brought us a copy of the plan every year, and if that thing had catastrophically failed, it would have probably come to Moxon Gap down here and backed up into Hiltons. Because all the debris and everything else would not have been able to have get out down the south fork of the Hudson River. And if the river had been up a whole lot, it would back up into Weber City in this area. So we're included in that plan, and they have overlay maps that I have in the plan that shows that that, in the event of a catastrophic failure, could be an event. So those are the two dams that we worry about and dealing with that. The volunteer and donations management, you can have things happen, it may be people don't need assistance, but we get offers from a lot of stuff, so we have to look at that. We had a lot of water donated during the Helene that came in. We didn't need a whole lot of it, so we managed that by letting people take it over to North Carolina and places where they really needed water if we didn't need any more here. But it has a shelf life, bottled water don't last forever. So a lot of it, if it gets beyond the shelf life, we have to dispose of it, but we like to get, get it out the door to somebody if we don't need it. And that's an example of that. Logistics management goes back to purchasing to getting stuff and scheduling it in that we have to buy, and keeping track of how we want to pay for stuff. Because if we're going to ask for money back from FEMA, we have to have documents and records for it, and then we have to go through the purchasing process depending on what we have to buy at a particular time. Public affairs goes back to the legislature and day-to-day operations. So this time of year, you'll start seeing a push from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and the newspapers about Fire Prevention Week coming up in October, home fire safety for people who need to be aware of it. Advisories of what people need to do at their homes to be prepared for a winter storm or disasters or anything else, that they have clothing available, that maybe if they need to take to shelter, that they have their medicines in one place, that they have maybe firewood laid in and this type of thing. Pet sheltering comes back to the disaster part of this, which is a federal requirement that you take care of pets that come to shelters, and we've had some challenges on that. So we normally work with the dog wardens that they will pick up animals if people bring them to the shelter, unless they're a animal that has to be, you know, to help somebody with them, or in some cases, maybe a comfort animal for whatever. That's one side of the thing, but it's, it's hard to manage those animals inside a shelter when that's set up out here. We've had requests before that people, especially in cold weather in the winter, that they came to shelter, but they wanted us to go back and get, they had rattlesnakes and other stuff that they wanted to bring to the shelter with them, but unfortunately, we don't really want to do that. So we ask them to throw some blankets over them or whatever, and they probably get by on their own. So, and that's the truth. So catastrophic incidents are things that are the really bad things that happen out there. So what's, can, on our risk analysis, what can that be? Flooding, that's always a problem. There's not much we can do with it. There's roads that always get closed, we know where they are. We try to look at that from a standpoint of any mitigation or anything else, that's something you just really can't control. Oil and hazardous materials response plan. One of the, this Highway 23 through here, we've done commodity studies, what's going up and down the road, what's on the railroads out here, so, and what are we prepared to deal with? So one of the things that we went back into county out of emergency management money, and we've got about 600 gallons of firefighting foam that we have banked between Duffield and Gate City and Weber City, but it's also available anywhere that we needed in the county. And the reason we banked that up because we determined by our commodity studies that there are tractor and trailers constantly going through Scott County hauling gasoline, diesel fuel, and they're leaving Knoxville, and they're usually going to Whitesburg, Kentucky. And then if they're going south, they're usually empty when they're hauling that way, in addition to the railroad yard down in Newman, which has all this stuff that's coming from Eastman and Industries in Kingsport. So we have to be aware that maybe we could have a major fire any time. Last fall, we used most of our foam on that big tire fire down in Weber City because we had to get that thing put out, and water just wasn't doing it. So we ended up having to buy that. And we ended up buying over $32,000 worth of foam to replace the foam that we used. So we have our foam bank back in good shape. The number one thing normally going through besides gasoline through here, the second thing was normally at that time garbage that's been hauled through the county, which could have anything in it, which is going to the landfill down Hawkins County. The third thing was wood chips. Now, that's been reduced a whole lot, but there's still a lot of the wood products going through. So those are the things that, as far as hazardous materials. So those are the things that as far as hazardous materials. Resource shortages involve anything that becomes in short supply that may impact the public. So, and that before has been, for example, that maybe food stocks get low for some reason. People have trouble for feeding their cattle because they have a bad summer or a bad hay season. We have a drought and there's not enough grass being grown. And we've had to work with the Department of Agriculture and the Conservation Office to have hay brought in from out of state just to keep cattle fed, to keep people from losing their farms or whatever. Water contamination, that's a big one because we have to protect our water plants in the county, both the Gate City, the Monson Gap and the Duffield Water Plants. It also can cover people out here who have wells, so we have to be aware that if somebody's hitting oil tank leaks in their neighborhood, that could get into somebody's well and drinking water. So we have to be proactive on those things, and that's happened before. Nuclear attack, well, we're downwind of Oak Ridge, so if something ever happens, we're probably going to have a lot of that. Now, at one time in our plan, we did a lot of work about nuclear attack, and you can probably remember if you're old enough that you used to have these signs outside of buildings for shelters and had the capacity on them, and they were in basements and under churches and everything else. And we also maintained a stock of radiological monitoring equipment and dosimeters that you could measure your dosage, your exposure, and guide grid counters and this type of thing. And the state maintained all this stuff. But back in the eighties, after the SALT limitation talks, strategic armed limitation talks, the government stepped back away from these things, and it was sort of a, I guess, mutually assured destruction thing between the United States and our adversaries that we would not generally help protect the public, and that's where they got to. So they removed all that equipment and took that away, so we don't have that anymore. That don't mean, though, that we need to be aware of that. Now, if we do have any nuclear products or radioactive stuff, we can call our regional hazardous materials coordinator, Scotty Sprouls, who lives just up in Mendota, and he can come in and he has all the latest equipment to do that with. Aircraft accidents, depending on the size of aircraft, it can depend on that you either have survivors, and those can be hard things to manage because they may be spread over a big area. That generally generates a lot of concern, and you may have a lot of stuff out there that you've got to protect area and have to have a heavy presence of law enforcement to keep people out of these areas. And of course, that leads to having the investigation done. Severe weather can happen anytime, and that's, as we've experienced all the time, it's thunderstorms, windstorms, tornadoes, the flooding, anything else that can happen that comes under the severe weather category. And by any storm sheltering. So again, this comes back to where we can send people to or open a shelter if they need it, if they have a power outage or have some other need. And a lot of folks that normally need that assistance may be people that are dependent on home oxygen and don't have a place to go or a way to generate their oxygen because it has to be plugged in somewhere. A lot of people have gotten away from tanks that they used to have the oxygen tanks and breathe out of, and they've gone to the electric units. But during Helene, I don't think that we had really any requests. Most people went somewhere else or could plug those in, and a lot of them were running on batteries, have battery backups on them. So we didn't have any problems with those. So that's sort of a rundown of where the plan is. So we're in this stage now of redoing this plan, getting it up to speed, and then bringing it back next year to get the board approval on it. So has anybody got any questions on anything?
I have one, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Way back, we used to have a mock of this every year or every two years or half or half. Do we still have those?
We do it three ways they normally do that. We have tabletops, and we'll do a tabletop here in October, I think the 23rd, that we'll be doing a tabletop setting up the EOC. You can have field exercises that we do and then major emergencies. One reason that we've had sort of stepped back away from these is not wanting to have, we just don't have the volunteers to work them. That, in other words, used to, if you had so many people in the fire departments and in the rescue squads that were available, come out and do that, spend all day. And now we just have enough people to run three ambulances in the county, and we don't have them. And during the day, a lot of times, we're just really short on people for the fire departments. I had to go out Friday morning, me and another guy, two or three from Duffield, tackle a house fire out here in Downey, and that's at six o'clock on Friday morning. And it's just four or five. It used to, we'd have twenty or 25 people. We just don't have a number of volunteers we used to. Not that we shouldn't have exercises to do those things, but we just have, don't have people expire to do that at this point. And that's one reason why a lot of organizations have asked us not to try to do that at this point in time, but that don't mean we don't need to do that. But you're correct.
You know, we're seeing more frequent storms, you know, nationwide.
Yes.
You know, we got it last November, was it Helene?
Right.
And we saw several people came in here not knowing where they could go or what was about. What do you have that you can give people? Well, let them know, if this happens, I can do this.
Well, here's the thing. We're limited on how many shelters we can set up. So normally, we could set up one shelter. So we're looking for a shelter that has power at it or maybe access to water. And if we're going to tell people that, if we're going to say, okay, you can go to any school and in a storm or something and it'll be open, but we can't guarantee it's open. Now, if we set up a shelter, we know that somebody is there. We've opened it and we have power at it, so we make that decision at that time. And we broadcast that to the public, and it can be by radio, it can be on the media, on computers or text or whatever, and we have it do it. We can also, if they go to a fire station or see a police officer or something, we broadcast it to those people so that they can tell people, here's where you need to go. And we set a priority, for example, getting the roads opened up, the trees cut at least passable, and that we can transport people to a shelter. So that's how we go about that.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
You were just talking about the radio. Back during November, we had no power, so the older people and stuff didn't know places to go.
Right.
Because they'd ask me later. And I tucked off four o'clock that night. And I rode through the county. Duffield had power. The McDonald's and everything on the other side of 23 had power. Rode through Gate City here. Only building that had power was this building, the lights off.
Right.
I go on through Lindar, red lights, nothing's working. Get on other side of Kyle Hill. They had power, but when you went 300 yards through gravelly, there was no power there again.
Right.
And then I made a round through New Beast and Will and back up Stone Drive and back through Waddleow Gap, hallway, Ice Browder Chapel, no power again. But how could we get a deal set up now if the people could see this on TV till we would have shelters, till they'd know instead of trying to figure out when there's no electricity or something like that?
That's a good point. So our decision point would have to be, as you said, where do we have power? So if we had needed a shelter maybe on the other end of the county where they had power down at Dust Pat School, because that's fed out of Powell Valley Electric, they didn't have as many problems down there as we did. So that's an option. If they have a, and this goes back to emergency preparedness and home, I was mentioning those things, people ought to have a stock of. They need a battery-powered AM/FM radio because we can, you know, put that on the radio and send that out. Here's where you need to go to a shelter, or we put it on TV. And the power's off, that's understandable. Now, a lot of folks, and I won't say everybody, but it's amazing how many people in the last few years have a generator at their home. Now, not everybody's able to do that. But if they know somebody that don't have power, whatever, if they check on them, if they contact us or make that arrangements, then they can bring them to a shelter or set up to do that. Now, we didn't have anybody that we know of that needed shelter and requested it because it wasn't real cold, the weather was pretty nice during that. We were fortunate in that, that the weather was decent enough that people could stay in their homes, and that's always a good thing.
Right.
But, and you're correct on that. So that's one of the things we encourage because that's probably about our only way to communicate with them. If we receive calls that there's people we need to check on, like during the blizzard of 93 and stuff, the Public Works guys, which they can't be hauling garbage because they can't get the landfill or do that, they would take the Public Works trucks and they would deliver food or go check on people that, we'd get calls and say, well, we hadn't heard from so-and-so in a few days and their phone line's down or whatever, so it needs to be checked on. The other limitation, going back to communications, is that at some point during these storms, the cell phone towers get loaded up, so many people trying to talk. I had that trouble. We was trying to send emails, I was trying to contact the state, and I'd just get cut off, or every time I'd put in a message, it'd just drop out or it'd go off. And I, you know, it's really a challenge to communicate. And that's probably the worst-case scenario that you can have, is what we had in Helene. That's just about as bad as it gets for everybody. And usually, they're not that bad, so hopefully they won't again. But we try to work toward improving things to get around those things. And your point's well taken about that, notifying people, and I appreciate that. And we'll work on that, like I say, trying to encourage people to be more self-sufficient or at least have radios and ask questions about what they need to do. Where are those shelters? All of those county schools are considered shelters, but we don't have any county schools that have backup power. Now, the Gate City Middle School, and Gate City is fed in two different directions. It comes from Hill Station and it comes from Kingsport this way. So if we lose one or the other of the circuits, we still have power here. During Helene, we lost both of those circuits, but this building still had power. So the buildings that have backup power in the county system is the 911 building up here has backup power. We have backup power on our radio transmitter sites, on Clinch Mountain, Powell Mountain, the High Knob, and at the landfill sites. So these have generators, so that's the thing that really works our Public Works people because they have to take off and make sure that those things are fueled and make sure they're running and everything else. This building and the core area in this building that is the emergency operations centers and the offices has a backup power generator out back. The sheriff's office, which is the old EOC and the old county offices, it has backup power on it. And then I think there's a generator that runs portions of the Pioneer Center, I think, down there too, which could possibly be used as a shelter or whatever after the fact. But again, having the people and the supplies to set that up is another challenge.
Jeff, just want to make sure you understand that because all the schools are designated as possible shelters, that doesn't mean people should assume to go to a school if they need. They need to call 911 and ask where our shelter is if we got to know that.
We're generally asking the people to call 911 or the business number 911, and they can give them their name and maybe their telephone number, and, you know, if they need shelter, then they can direct them to a shelter that's open. They may be also, if they're not loaded up too bad, that they can record some basic information. Is your house livable? What, is your house livable? Do you need to go to a shelter? Do you know of anybody else that needs assistance? Or is there some problem that you're having that you need help with that we need to send somebody to check on you? And that's worked out pretty well for us so far. Now, there's going to be areas out here, and I know that through Monday morning, actually Monday afternoon, I think on the road up on the High Knob out to the lake out there, the lake out there, came from there. And I think Dunn County Fire Department stayed up there Sunday and through Monday just cutting trees out of the road because VDOT was overwhelmed, and they had their priorities for the main roads and secondary roads, but we had a lot of volunteer firefighters that were going out and cutting out people's driveways, elderly people that couldn't get out and didn't have a chainsaw. So they were having to go out and work on private property or cut trees off of houses or doing things or putting, we call them FEMA tars, which are the blue plastic tars on people's roofs to keep them from leaking in their houses. So there's a whole lot goes on that you don't hear about or you don't see until after you talk to a lot of people and find out what's going on.
You mentioned the generator grants. Have you had any success with that?
Not at this point. No, they've not rolled out anything heavy, Josh.
No, I haven't seen anything.
And we required about that again in the last week.
Yeah, definitely talking about being on the lookout for any funding that would get some generators or something.
Some of these programs have been in starts and stops. I talked to Jessica Sweeney in Wise County, and I know, you know, when they did their school building program, one of the things they did was to, from what I understand, that they actually designed the school in mind of being a shelter, which it had storage areas along the cafeteria and the wall door, and they could put stuff in there and lock it up. And those portions of the building have emergency generators on, sort of built into the schools when they were built. And it's pretty easy to do that when you're building a building, but you go trying to rewire something after the fact, it's more difficult. So, but it's not that we're not looking. We're hoping to do something with that.
Atlanta Wisco did some work with utilities and funding some, or getting funding for large generators, which I think all that's happening.
We talked to them, what was it, back in December, you remember meeting with them? And we brought that up with them about that, and they're aware of that too. But we did, and we did talk about that real nonchalant meeting with them, yes. We can find that, we'll try to do that.
You mentioned you have 32 cots, is that it?
That's about what we can haul in our trailers. We have two CERT trailers. The CERT trailers are Community Emergency Response Team trailers. So at one time, and that was federal money that paid for those. And the community response teams were, this is something that came out of California and FEMA really touted because they wanted church groups or civic groups to be involved in emergency response and after a storm or earthquake or something, help the community. So we got two of the trailers and we bought a lot of equipment to go with them. And at one time, the Gate City Methodist Church up here had a group, and it was a chainsaw team that went out and helped people cut trees and had equipment in it. And then we had Three Bells Methodist Church in Duffield was one of the teams, and I think one of the churches in Nickelfield. But again, I guess it's like a lot of other things that happen, people sort of lost interest and decided that they weren't working anymore, so we've had to pull those in. If I can find a group or a church group or an activity group that'd like to have one of those, well, we'd be happy to set them up and get them trained in doing that. So we've got cots and bedding and stuff in those trailers that we can take out. So you may end up that if you've got enough to get started on a shelter and you need more than that setup, then we would be working with the Red Cross to bring them in from outside of the county, to bring in more resources. And that number, if you had 35 or 40 people, it might fluctuate, you might get so many the first day, but a lot of people may leave and go home, you know, if their conditions don't improve. And then we screen people that there's people that have medical issues or problems that probably don't need to be in a shelter, that they may need to go to the hospital or some medical facility for treatment. So we try to sort them that way. Questions? Comments? I'm sorry, I bored y'all today for that.
I appreciate it.
So we hope to, on the 23rd October, I gotta check the date on that, and Josh had to talk about this, but we normally set up an annual drill. We operate for, during the day, we operate the emergency operations center. We set up the telephones, which plug in the jacks under your desk, and the different leadership positions have a phone with an outside line. Ham radio, people come in and they set their cabinet back here and they set up their ham radio equipment where they can talk on the radio and communicate. We test our radios, we go over communications equipment. We may have people going out in the field that day that can go out and we'll set up some scenarios where they go look at a house and maybe gather some information and bring it back that's damage assessment and this type of thing. So that's the type of thing we do. We usually buy pizzas for lunch and feed people and just sit and talk about the plan, talk about things that need to be done.
Yeah. I've got down the 16th, but we'll nail down the date, October.
Okay. Probably right on. I think you're correct. Yeah. Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bricky.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
And I want to tell you, we appreciate, on behalf of responders in the county, our Fire Law EMS and Public Works, we appreciate the board, what you do in funding these organizations because that's the backbone of organizations.
It is.
The more equipment they have and the funding they have, that made it possible. We couldn't have got through it without them. And I want to thank you for what you do for those folks. It really means a lot. We couldn't do it without you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for what you do. Appreciate you.
All right. Next on the agenda is mutual aid and cooperation agreement for law enforcement for Scott County, Virginia and Washington County, Virginia. Mr. Wilson, can you address this for us, please?
Yes. So I have that agreement in everyone's packet, and I hope you had a chance to kind of look through it. Looks pretty straightforward as far as just that mutual aid agreement between Scott and Washington Counties. I don't know if anybody has any comments on it. Otherwise, we just need approval of this.
Do I have some? Thank you. Do I have someone to second this? Do I have someone to second this, approve that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. All right, motion carried. There you go. All right, next on the agenda is black loan resolution. Mr. Wilson, we'll let you talk about that again for us, please.
Right, the Appalachian Citizens Law Center reached out to the county, um, requesting this, uh, letter be sent to federal lawmakers to support and vote for legislation to assist disabled minors, including legislation to increase monthly black loan benefit rates. And they did provide, like, a little breakdown that I put in everybody's packets, um, kind of outlining, um, kind of where that's been, where it's going. Um, so they're just asking for...
A letter to support?
Yes, correct.
All righty. Um, do I have a motion for us to send this letter to support?
So moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We'll be sending that letter out then. Thank you. All right, um, next is our added, um, it is the sheriff's office comp board, additional officer, Eddie.
Uh, we've had several occasions where Sheriff Eddie said that, uh, he was understaffed, in his opinion, and several citizens saying they needed more coverage in the county. We also heard from investigator Ross at one point, saying his work with caseload was, he could use ten investigators in addition to what they already have. So obviously, there's a need in the county for additional law enforcement. And I wasn't that familiar with the comp board, but I did do a little research on it. The general assembly allocated one person for the police department per fifteen-hundred residents in the county, so I'm assuming he's maxed out based on what he has in front of him. Otherwise, you have to petition to the state to get additional people, based on special needs. And the caseload, we've got Highway twenty-three, uh, I checked with the county attorney's office, he felt like there was a need for additional officers, and Sheriff Eddie said he felt the same way. So as a third party in this, I think we need to be involved in trying to push this forward, and requesting from the state of Virginia to add additional law enforcement officers to the sheriff's department, through the comp board. We do have an option ourselves, it's to fund it, at the local, I, I understand, we can do that, but the comp board, I think, is the best approach.
Is this something that we should talk with Sheriff Eddie's about?
Uh, sure, yeah, he would be the one that would initiate it, I think.
He would have to be the one to, to ask, correct?
I don't know if they've done that.
And to initiate the process.
Maybe you wanna table it to next month?
Table it to next month, I think, yes.
Cause that night, we'll get Sheriff in here, and kind of, maybe he can give a presentation or something like this.
Does the county, uh, pay for one now?
Yes.
That's what I thought, we had one, we had one under comp.
Mm-hmm.
Already, pretty sure.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so you all good with table on this till next month, and we'll, uh, invite Sheriff Eddie?
Yes, I'll reach out.
And, all right, sounds good. All right, next on the agenda is, uh, bookkeeping items with Ms. Bickers.
Please appropriate twenty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents to rescue services four for life grant, one thousand dash three-two-three zero-zero dash four-zero five-six-two-one, for monies received and deposited to treasurer's office.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve the appropriation as presented by Ms. Bickers?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. All right, next on the agenda, we have appointments by Ms. Lee.
The building code appeals board has been on the general agenda several months, it was re-advertised, and you did not receive any applications.
May the vice chair, I spoke with Robbie Sally today, while he was here, pretty had served on that board before, and he was tickled to death to continue to be on that board, so, he said yes.
All right, that's wonderful. Thank you.
I'll nominate Robbie Sally then.
I'll second. I'll make the motion, but nomination cease, and we go by proclamation. Do I have that? Let me guess.
Do I get a second?
Well, of course.
Okay. Then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
For the record, he didn't say he was tickled to death.
So, then Mr. Robbie Sally's gonna be on the air, again. All right, next on the agenda is our county attorney's report, Ms. Cagley.
I don't have anything for you all today, uh, I can answer any questions.
I do have a couple. Um, you attended a small business that's in a group meeting. Um, could you tell us a little bit about what came out there?
It's ongoing, so I don't wanna, uh, John is working with Atlanta Whisco, and, uh, I think there'll be another committee meeting to discuss that further.
Okay. The other thing, and we got this handout today, it's on the cases for the judge, on some of the animal control issues. Um, you attended, I'm thinking you're, uh, you're part, you said you attended one of the cases. Is there anything in general, you know, we have a lot of people coming forward about animal cruelty, and speaking for the board. Is there anything that you could tell those people, this is what you need to go proceed to court? I know there are animal controls involved, but what is the judge really looking for?
Yeah, and I can't speak to that as well as, uh, Jake Dougherty could, as animal control officer, because he and Stacy could be now bringing those cases all the time. I don't attend those with them, they present it to the judge.
Well, I think you went to one, didn't you?
It was about abandoned animals.
Like cat and, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, in that case, what were the key points that made it, was there conviction in that case?
No, it wasn't about a conviction or not, it was a special circumstance with an emergency custody order. She was taken from her home, the owner of these animals, and the animals needed to be taken care of in the meantime.
Yep.
So she came back and reclaimed those animals, and it was a good outcome.
Thank you, Ms. Cagley. All right, next on the agenda is the county administrators' report, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Um, you have your green sheets here, we'll run through this first. General fund balance, eight million, one hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred seven dollars and eighty cents. Had a early set, uh, claims for the month of nine hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars and nineteen cents. The total claims for the month, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars and seven cents. Entertained a motion, pay the bills.
All right, so moved. Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll hear.
Okay, go to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried, we're gonna pay those bills.
Paul, are you finished?
I have a few items here, um, just for miscellaneous. We need, uh, first, a board action to ratify the permit for fireworks for Duffield days. All the appropriate paperwork was received, and it was approved at the last EDA board meeting, um, but the board needs to ratify that permit.
Okay. Can I get a motion to ratify that?
So moved.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
So, along those same lines, I would be requesting board action for any future fireworks permits that would be displayed or fired from EDA property, um, that, you know, EDA board approves that anyway, and all the necessary paperwork has to come in, as far as insurance and whatnot. Um, I guess I would request a board action to, uh, bypass the ratification process from this board for those instances, um, where it deals with EDA property. Um, if it's, you know, just county property, then obviously, we would come for, to this board for approval.
All right. Can I get a motion to, um...
Bypass the ratification process for fireworks permits on EDA property.
What he said, can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Danny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Registration's open for VACO conference, I had reached out to see, um, what interest there was, um, from the board, um, as far as, uh, who wanted to go, I did have two that reached out. Um, I believe we need a board approval on who is to attend the VACO conference. I'll add, um, besides myself and the two interested board members, um, I would request, and I, I guess I should back up, so every county gets three rooms allocated to them, and I did, uh, reach out to say that we would be using those three rooms, but also get on a waitlist for additional rooms, two additional rooms. I'd request that Sally and Bill be allowed to go as well, um, if we were to obtain those two extra rooms. And I don't know when we'll know that for sure, but, um, I guess, uh, right now, it'd be myself, uh, Ms. Glover, Ms. Addington, uh, if anyone else wanted to go, and then Ms. Sally, and Mr. Dingus.
Do you have to say a voting member, an elected?
We have, we have to give one of us voting privileges.
So you all approve that?
Yeah, we'll do that here.
Yeah, but today, or?
Just before we go.
The next meeting?
We'd have to do it before, yeah, we'd have to do it at the next meeting, because...
October, right?
Well, we could do it at the November meeting, either one, because it's not till the week after. Either way, just as long as we have someone.
I would put it in October.
Okay.
So we don't forget.
Yeah, do that.
I, I'm looking forward to it, because I have yet to get to go to any of the meetings that we've had in Richmond, or the VACO meeting, so I'm very excited.
Did no one else wanna?
Anybody else?
Green pants, be here next. Where are you going?
Where are you going? To the VACO conference.
It's at, uh, the Ami Homestead.
In Bat County.
Bat County, correct. November...
Eight-thirty-one.
Do we need to crowd on anything on that?
There you go.
Do we need to vote then? I don't know, who's going, or just the voting member then?
Okay, just the voting.
And we're gonna do that?
So I'll go ahead and register, um, us for that, that way we can get that done, and then we'll address in October, the voting member.
Unless you wanna do it, just, you can do it now, we can do it now, and just get that out of the way and be done.
We can do that.
I'll nominate you to be the voting member, since you're the vice chair.
I was gonna nominate you, but okay.
That's a motion.
That's a motion, I'll make the motion to...
Michelle's the voting member.
Yeah, send Michelle as the voting member.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Marching.
Motion carried. I am the voting member for VACO, all right.
Okay, a few other things here, if you'll bear with me. Um, there's some, uh, going to be some opportunities for grants, um, kind of dealing with the recent storm damage, uh, we'll gather some more information on them. Uh, the first one I wanted to highlight was the Farm Recovery Block Grant, be opening early September, um, don't have an exact date, um, could be beneficial to Scott County farmers with, uh, damage from the recent storms. I will say Scott Gerald's had, uh, taking, they've kind of looked towards extension to take lead on this, so he'll be the one, he's trained in filling out those applications and stuff, so if any farmer wants more information, always feel free to reach out here, but also reach out to the extension office, and he'll have all that info for, for them, and be able to help them apply. Um, several other things, uh, and actually have a meeting tomorrow to kind of dive deeper into these. Uh, there's a, a CDVG disaster recovery grant, um, with four programs, housing recovery, infrastructure recovery, economic revitalization, and public services recovery. It's gonna be a resilient Virginia revolving fund, uh, there's several different categories for that, um, and that'll be, I think, most of all of these that I'm mentioning will be, uh, handled through the planning district. Um, but, there's also, the VDAF has one, um, EADR, and HMGP, um, and then there'll be several loan options, but more information to come. If anybody, um, you know, uh, these are not just for farmers, but, uh, anybody that was maybe displaced, um, as a result of the storm, um, you can always reach out to this office, hopefully have more information tomorrow on that.
Have you heard from, uh, is it Mr. Bagley in Fort Rattler?
I was kinda asking something.
Cause he really was displaced, he actually ended up having to buy another...
Right.
Cause I was gonna ask you something about it, for the town.
I know.
And that slipped my mind.
We had met, kind of, when we first had this initial call, um, with, uh, Mr. Williams, Mr. Dingus, and Mr. Bricky, kind of identifying who we knew, um, that would benefit, and I believe, uh, he was probably on that list of five or six that we were kind of looking at.
Let's just make sure that that stays, make sure his name's on it, please, I appreciate it, but, yeah. Yeah. Do you know anything, shoot, you know anything that's happened about that there for Mr. Bagley? Uh, Thut Bagley?
Oh, that, well, that's what we're...
Yeah, I know, that's what we're talking about.
No, other than, we, we worked with him about getting into what he's living in now, and, uh, as far as building code and all that, but, no, we're still working through this grant process for, uh...
Cause I, I know several months ago, he is, I know he had to move, well, I knew he had to move.
I, I spoke with him a couple of times, and, uh, the FEMA has shifted a lot of stuff to the state, it's been pretty atypical here, as far as the federal government does, so, uh, uh, but, uh, hopefully, some of these grants that, uh, Mr. Wilson's talking about.
Hopefully, yeah, that's what I'm saying, hopefully, we can make, I just wanna make sure he's still on the list, to make sure he's top... Yeah, I mean, that guy's lost it all. He did. I mean, it's just not, it's not true. Okay.
Yeah, we'll definitely be addressing that, um, and hopefully have some resources for him.
Thank you.
Um, the, uh, did apply for the, uh, PPE grant through the fire programs, um, worked with all seven of the fire departments in the county, I wanted to thank their, uh, thank, thank them for getting me all the information, going through all their inventory, um, and, uh, their help in submitting this, so, that's been submitted, we'll see, I don't know what the timeline is, as far as hearing back from that, but fingers crossed that, uh, we'll see some funding to help them out with some of their expired gear.
Say a little prayer.
Yes.
That would be huge.
That would be wonderful.
I'm, I'm sure he could use it.
Absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, there's a huge need, uh, in the county for anything, emergency... Yeah, there's a huge need in the county for anything emergency services related, but yes, kind of an eye-opening exercise to go through the inventory to find all the expired gear that these fire departments have, so... And I believe that's all I have.
I don't know if you have this off the top of your head, but the, I wasn't sure where it came in the budget, but you know, the balance on the Scott Services account, that's the in-laid restitution for participating in court release program. They pay, I think, two hundred fifty dollars a month into that, and I just wondered what the balance was. So hang me if you happen to have it. Well, you don't need to have it today, but in the future, if you got that force.
I think they moved it to the budget, didn't they?
I love it, yeah.
The fund is in your, verified now.
They pay it directly to the Treasury's office, right?
But they could have still been some collected since then, but I'd have to check that balance.
That's what we're doing now. Transfer to the general.
I don't know what they're doing since they paid.
Do they budget?
Directly goes to the general fund now, doesn't it?
Do they pay it here at the Treasury's office? Is that how that works now, do they pay it at the Treasury's office? Supposed to, maybe?
Not sure. We, I reckon through the service.
I can't remember how. No, they were going to make a weekly payment, they were going to bring them up here, that's what it was, okay. I remember now.
Okay, next item is Board of Supervisors comments, requests, recommendations. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, last month, when we was here, Eddie mentioned something there about closed sessions, and what was the deal? How can we go in closed sessions if some, one of us mentioned it? Can you remember?
Ms. Cagley did send something out on there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, she sent a...
She sent an email.
Explaining them out real good.
Because I know we had some disagreements or something on that, I just wanted...
Yeah, she sent that email.
Okay.
We're good.
Yeah, mine's been under deceit since yesterday. I played it up last night, it'd be two-step for this morning.
Another thing, of course, the FEDO thing, I think we pretty much hashed that out already, but I don't have anything worth reporting on that. But something, again, going back to our last meeting, the restitution payments that we voted to redirect to the EDA. There was mentioned by Mr. Manus that matching grants, matching funds were contributed by the EDA for some projects, in particular, the Devil's Bathtub and Crooked Road Tech Center. And I did do some research through accounting and also the EDA. There's been no matching funds from the county going toward projects in recent history. So that was not accurate. In particular, the two that were mentioned, we did not match any of the funds for those two projects. We thought the restitution payment would be about two thousand a month. Actually, the first one was twenty-two thousand, one seventy-nine, the famine restitution.
That was a kickoff, a one-time payment, but the continuing monthly payments, I believe what was agreed upon was five thousand. Now, what of that will get after court fees and stuff, I'm not sure. Yeah, I think it was twenty-five thousand was the payment, and I think what we actually received was like twenty-two something.
Attended a Lenawisco meeting. Again, is, they're applying for phase two of the water, one point one million, through Lenawisco. And the Flowers Gap Lee Kennedy Project, they've been funded four hundred eighty thousand, and they're requesting additional funding, which will total one point eight million. So they're applying now for that in 2025. Attended a Nicholsville Town Public Hearing with Lenawisco and Charlie Lawson. They got a DHCD planning grant application request for forty thousand, so they're working on some projects there down in Nicholsville. And they're working on the Bush Mill, doing virtual and live tours of Bush Mill, so that's hopefully coming soon. EDA, the Pioneer Center, the New Roof, they've already got a hundred and forty thousand in funding, and they'll be applying for a hundred and forty thousand additional funding through the Hamler Grant Program. And that's all I have.
Anybody else? All right, well, I'd like to say something. I'd like to tell all the staff here at the county office, we really do appreciate you all so much. And I'd like to tell Chris that I hope I made you proud there, buddy. But you are in our thoughts and prayers, we hope you feel better. We do not have a closed session meeting today, so we will adjourn this meeting until next month, October the first, 2025, at nine AM. Meeting is adjourned.
Good job.
Good job.
Are you in now? Thank you, I'm so glad you gave me your name.